Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is April 23rd, 2024. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please bow your heads for an invocation. Dear Lord, thank you for your abundant blessings and surround you us with stewardship and supportive community in Kettering. We thank you for the ability to engage in useful work and for the honor of bearing these important responsibilities. We are grateful for your boundless love for all of us. Please continue to give us the strength and compassion with which to serve and grant us the wisdom to make appropriate decisions. Help us remain humble and grateful for the opportunity to lead. Guide this council so that we may work in harmony while serving our citizens with integrity and purpose. Allow us to fulfill the responsibilities entrusted in us by our residents. Well, good evening. Before we get on with our agenda, I'd like to just quickly recognize our Miami Valley Communication Council TV operator, Mike Soprone. We know him as the hand. You may notice a sparsity of familiar faces up here on the dais today. We're hitting that time of year where people seem to be taking vacations and they all do it together. But, so just to fill in space, we invited all of our old council members to come back tonight and fill the audience. I'm sorry for the word "previous" or "past." But welcome to Tony and Bruce and Rob and Joe and our former mayor, Don Patterson, are all here with us tonight. They're actually here for one of the items on the agenda, which we'll get to later. But welcome and we hope you enjoy it and come back every week. So I didn't even hear a smattering of smiles for that one. Okay. I will call on Mr. Sullivan for a motion to approve the minutes from the April 9th meeting and workshop.
Your Honor, I have reviewed both the council minutes and the workshop minutes from April 9th, and I find them in order and I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudif?
Yes.
Mayor Leiner?
Yes. We do have three appointments tonight, all to the Sustainability Committee, which continues to meet on a regular basis and are doing some very interesting work. I don't know if any of these three people are here tonight. Zachary Pieso?
No.
Nope. His term ending 12/31/25. And Pamela White? Is she here?
Nope.
Okay, none of them are, okay. That's for 12/31/26. And Gary Victor for a term ending 12/31/26. Okay, so everyone in favor of those appointments say no motion. Okay. I need a motion.
Oh, motion for approval.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anyone opposed? Okay. We have a proclamation for Building Safety Month. And Shane, would you like to read that?
I can do that. Okay. So whereas the city of Kettering is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion and diligent guardians who are building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our property. And whereas Mission Possible, the theme for Building Safety Month 2024, encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. Now therefore, Peggy Leiner, Mayor of the City of Kettering, Ohio, on behalf of city council and the community, does hereby proclaim May 2024 to be Building Safety Month in the city of Kettering, Ohio. And we urge all citizens to reflect on how they can improve building safety in their personal and daily lives.
Thank you, Shane. Receiving the proclamation tonight will be Patrick Hiller, Chief Building Official of the city. So come on up here, Patrick, and we'll give you this and if you'd like to say a few words to the podium.
As the city architect and building official, I appreciate you guys making this proclamation. This is obviously what I do every day and find this to be extremely important. And getting this acknowledgement is important. And we like to take this month to take what we know and educate the public a little bit more about what we do through this proclamation and through the education of the public through Building Safety Month. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, and thank you for all you do for the city.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. I neglected to say that Jackie Fisher, Jill Hall, and Bob Scott all have excused absences this evening. Okay. We have no public hearings this evening. This is the point in the agenda. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address any of the legislation on tonight's agenda, this is the time for them to do that. Anyone wishing to speak before council with comments or new information about the legislation on tonight's agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meetings. Is there anyone who wishes to address council tonight? Okay. There was your chance. Ordinances in second reading. And I guess Mr. Sullivan will start with you again.
All right. Resolutions?
Mm-hmm. Ordinances in second reading.
Right, we have the ordinance.
Yeah.
Resolutions? Okay. All right. Your Honor, I have a resolution declaring a surplus and approving a contract to sell 9.58 acres of city-owned property in Miami Valley Research Park. This is requested by the city manager's office and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Greason.
Yes, Your Honor. We are talking about property that is adjacent to the Dayton Regional STEM School, which is located at 1724 Woodman Drive, Kettering, Ohio. And before you is a resolution that approves the transfer of the property, about 9.58 acres adjacent to the STEM School for construction of an elementary school on the site. The school is anticipated to be 60,000 square feet, and the sales price is $55,000 per acre. We'd be glad to answer any questions you have. The detailed terms and conditions are outlined in the contract that is an exhibit to the resolution in your agenda package.
Okay. Thank you very much. We happen to have the superintendent of the STEM School in the audience tonight. I'd like to invite Robin Fisher to come down to the podium and just tell us a little bit about the school. It's a real gem, and we are so proud to have you in our community.
Thank you so much for having us here this evening and for considering this purchase. We've been, goodness gracious, 13 years now in the city of Kettering with our six-through-12 building, educating students in STEM principles. And we have loved our partnership with the city of Kettering. It has been my dream since we opened in 2009 to one day have a K-12 campus. A lot of things got in the way of our projection of when that would happen, particularly COVID. We're excited now to be in the position to make that a possibility. For 10 years now, I've looked out my window and seen the property over there and just dreamed that that would be where our elementary school would be. If you ask any of our staff there, they'll tell you that I spoke about that our elementary school would be there one day. And so this is like a dream come true for me, which may sound really, really corny, but it is true. I think, we believe that the earlier you can start students learning in a certain way in project-based learning, in being engaged in work that matters, in authentic learning, that it's going to compel them to be able to solve the problems that we need our students to solve in the future, building those professional competencies and then that are very important for our future workforce also. So we want to continue that work, and we think it's really important to be able to start with our K-5 population to add on to our 612. And so this is just the first step in our vision. We do have SHP secured as our architect firm and SHOK Engineering as a contractor who's going to be working with us. So we have plans in motion. We'd love to open in the fall of 2025 with our first class of K-5 students. And we've had a lot of support from our community, from our stakeholders, obviously from our board, and our board president is here with us tonight too to show his support along the way. I also have with me Pat Murakami, who's going to be the principal of the elementary school. So what is so fun about this, she's been an educator with us for many years, has experience in elementary education too. And so her taking her experience with our model of education, being able to take it down to the elementary, we're real excited about that also. I am happy to answer any other questions. I could tell you a lot about our school, but I don't want to take up too much time tonight.
One thing that I get asked a lot about STEM schools, who are the students that go there? Where are they from?
Yeah, so we are a public independent STEM in the state of Ohio. There's only eight of our model. And so students from anywhere in the state can apply to come to our school. And then admission at that point is lottery-based. So if a parent has the ability to transport their students here through carpools, or if the local school district will bus them, that's how they get there. But we see, because of the lottery admission process, our student body is really a representation of our region, of like a three-county area here. So we do educate students from over 30 different school districts and as many as nine different counties that will come here. So it really is a drawing, I don't know, I think it just really highlights the city of Kettering and what's available here, that students and families who wouldn't even ever come to this region are able to come here because it's an educational option for their students. And it's kind of exciting because this will expand that a bit too.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? All right. Well, we will take a vote. We've been moved and seconded, so call.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudif?
Yes.
Mayor Leiner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing acceptance of a donation from the Doorwood Optimists Club through the Kettering Parks Foundation for installation of a drinking fountain at Gentilly Park. The estimated cost is $15,000. The amount budgeted is zero. This is requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Greason.
Your Honor, Ms. DuVal's introduction covered all the salient points, and we are once again thankful for a donation from the Doorwood Optimists Club.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Call the roll.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudif?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Leiner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining, negotiated quotes to contract for maintenance of various city-owned properties. This is an estimated cost of $45,000, which is the same amount budgeted. This is requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department. I do move for approval.
Second. Mr. Greason.
Yes, Your Honor. This authorizes us to move forward with maintenance of various city-owned properties. It consists of general property maintenance for numerous sites throughout the community. It also includes city-owned vacant lots, or what we call CDBG lots. Quotes have been received, and you're authorizing us to move forward.
Okay. Any questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Sudif?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mayor Leiner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a 2024 Community Safety Grant from CenterPoint Energy. This is requested by the Fire Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Greason.
Yes, Your Honor. The Kettering Fire Department would like to apply for the 2024 Community Safety Grant through CenterPoint Energy. If awarded, the funds will be used to help offset the cost of purchasing new LifePAC-35 monitors and defibrillators. The total award could be up to $2,500. Matching funds would be required by the city of Kettering. We'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Anyone have any questions? Okay. Call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudif?
Yes.
Mayor Leiner?
Yes.
I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Board of Commissioners of Montgomery County, Ohio, for the delegation of activities under the Lead Safe Ohio program in the city of Kettering. Estimated cost, $750,000. Amount budgeted, zero. This is requested by Planning and Development. I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Greason.
Yes, Your Honor. The Board of Commissioners of Montgomery County has been awarded $4,750,000 in a grant from the state of Ohio from the Lead Safe Ohio program. As part of that initiative, they would like to allocate $750,000 to Kettering to implement Lead Safe Ohio within the Kettering community. The program covers expenses related to lead abatement mitigation and activity, associated activities for homes, childcare facilities, and other congregate care facilities built before 1978, when lead pipes were used. Eligible homes could receive grants up to $50,000, while eligible facilities could receive grants up to $100,000. We anticipate that assistance will be available for up to 10 housing units in Kettering and up to four childcare centers in our community. If funds are remaining, you know, we'll extend assistance to other areas of need. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Does anyone have any questions? It's an important opportunity. Call the roll.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudif?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Leiner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to amend Resolution Number 11050-24 regarding radio upgrades. This is an estimated cost of $27,776, the same amount budgeted, and is requested by the Fire Department. I do move for approval.
Second. Mr. Greason.
Yes, Your Honor. On April 9th, you approved legislation that allowed us to move forward with what we call the P25 Radio Authentication Link Layer for the Police Department. Essentially, this is, makes our public safety communications, our radios more secure. We overlooked including the appropriation for the Fire Department in that resolution and are correcting that. This would be an additional expenditure of funds in the amount of $27,776 to include Fire Department radios in the upgrade. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Anyone have any questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Sudif?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mayor Leiner?
Yes.
Your Honor? Your Honor, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Kettering, state of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024. The estimated cost is a net transfer of $851,200. There's $0 budgeted, and this is requested by the Finance Department. I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Greason.
Yes, Your Honor. These supplemental appropriations relate to three things. One is the Gentilly Park water line and fountain. You authorized acceptance of the grant from the Parks Foundation, from the Doorwood Optimists for the installation of the water line. So we now need to appropriate the $15,000 to accomplish that project. Additionally, the bulk of it is the $750,000 for the Lead Safe Ohio program. And then the additional item is personal services. It's $86,200 is requested for the Police Department's personnel expenditures related to the wages and terms that were approved on April 15th in the contract with the Kettering Police Supervisors Association. The contract increases for 3.25% effective December 18th, 2023, and the cost impact of that is $72,500 in the Police Department Cost Center and $13,700 in the Police Pension Fund. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudif?
Yes.
Mayor Leiner?
Yes. Okay. We have no ordinances in first reading. We'll move to certifications and petitions. Ms. Kazinski, do we have any this evening?
Your Honor, we do not have any certifications or petitions this evening.
It's the last two yet. Okay. Managers' report.
Your Honor, I'll be brief. We are celebrating National Volunteer Week, and we want to thank the city of Kettering's incredible volunteers. We have a nationally award-winning program in the city of Kettering, and it is because we have outstanding and numerous volunteers that contribute to our community, and we want to say thank you. We're also celebrating Trails Day on April 27th. Cycle Kettering is partnering with the Rails to Trails Conservancy. We're celebrating two regional trails that pass through Kettering, the Dayton-Kettering Connector and the Iron Horse Trail, and there is a ride at 9:00 a.m. on April 27th. We encourage you to attend. We're also hosting our DEA Drug Takeback on Saturday, April 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We encourage people to bring their unused prescriptions and get rid of those. We also have a drug drop box at the police station, and we encourage anybody to use that when they need it. Also, on April 27th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., if you get done with the bike ride, you can come to this. At 11:00 a.m., Montgomery County is conducting a community development celebration. The communities that manage CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Funds, Dayton, Montgomery County, and the city of Kettering are hosting this celebration to commemorate 50 years of CDBG funds being available to make improvements in our communities. And so there'll be a Touch a Truck, it's free and open to the public, and there'll be resources that people can learn about to improve their lives. We encourage them to attend. Your joint school board meeting is coming up, 6:00 p.m. on Tuesday, April 30th. That will be at the Board of Education Building Firebird Room. Another great Kettering event is the Interactive Art Festival for Kids, Art on the Playground, Saturday, May 4th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Habitat Environmental Center. Wouldn't be the start of summer without the Community Block Party. We're encouraging everyone to join us at the Kettering Block Party at Lincoln Park and Fraser Pavilion and help celebrate our community, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Wednesday, May 29th. This is obviously an opportunity to learn more about city departments and services, enjoy entertainment, meet your friends, and find out why Kettering is home.
And eat a hot dog.
And what's that?
And eat a hot dog.
Or a deli bar. Yes, ma'am. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, if you would like to come speak before city council on a non-legislative issue, please come down to the podium. Each speaker will have a five-minute limit. Speakers are asked to state their name and address. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to council this evening? Okay. We've seen nobody. We will move along on the agenda, and I'm going to ask to amend the agenda to start with myself as opposed to Mr. Sullivan, to see why. Former council members did not show up tonight, just because I wanted to fill some chairs. They came tonight to join with us, to say goodbye and thank you to someone who's been absolutely invaluable to this council for many, many years, and that's Shawna Kazinski, who will be leaving today. The only good thing I can say about Shawna leaving tonight, and I had to dig deep to find something good, was that she's going to a really great organization. She's going to be at Learn to Earn, and she has been with us now for nine years. She has kept seven people who at times can be kind of unruly, disorganized for sure, in line, and has been absolutely wonderful. The only word I can use to describe your service to this council has been flawless. So we have a few gifts we'd like to give you tonight, and I know you don't want anyone to even notice you, but there's a card in here for your family to go out to dinner at your favorite restaurant. And then we just have some flowers to present to you. So I wanted to go first so that the rest of you could make a couple comments without giving away a secret. All right, thanks.
Well, I can't top that, Shawna. I just wanted to say thanks for helping me learn the ropes of council as a new member. I wish I could have worked with you longer, but I'm excited that you're getting more family time and excited to hear what's next for you. So thank you for your service. And I just wanted to quickly talk about Tree Fest really quick. It's already happened, it was last weekend, but it is quickly becoming one of my favorite weekends in Kettering. So if you missed it this year, it's something to listen for next year. We had a great turnout. It helps when the weather's beautiful. But every county got a tree, and Montgomery County, Kettering was selected to get that tree from, I believe it was ODNR gave one to each county. And I just wanted to shout out to Kettering real quick. We have five arborists in our Parks Department. No other city has anything close to that. So I think that's why we were selected, because of our exceptional tree care. So that's it for me.
Yeah, and nearly 200 people showed up and planted a lot of trees.
Great turnout.
Yeah.
I have a question for Mr. Sullivan before I do my comments. I think it was at the last council meeting where we did not know what kind of tree it was, other than big. Did we ever find out what kind of tree it is?
I am not sure. White, white.
It was a swamp white oak.
Someone knows.
No, was it really?
It was a swamp white oak. You're right, Brian.
I read the plaque.
You're right, yeah.
I read it too, I just didn't remember.
I just, real quick, I went to, I'll get to you, Shawna, and I'm really sorry I'm going to even talk about you, but I want to recognize we do have a Kettering leadership participant in the audience today. Rachel, thank you for being here. I hope you weren't bored. She has to say no, she wasn't. I also want to thank Brady Crest at Carolan Park, our Kettering Leadership Academy spent a couple Thursdays ago, spent the day at Carolan. It was our history day, learning about the history of Kettering and how Kettering It was our history day, learning about the history of Kettering and how Kettering innovation contributed to the world at large, and it's always such an amazing day. So thank you to Mr. Kress and everyone at Carillon. And Shawna, just thank you for everything. See, I kept it short. There you go. That's all.
Some people listen.
Like Shane, I was at Tree Fest, and if you weren't there by 9:30, there were no shovels and trees left. That's 200 volunteers, we outnumbered the new trees two to one. It's a fantastic day at Habitat. Also, on Shane's recommendation, I attended the musical at Fairmont High School to see my friend Daniel Breslin sing his heart out as the lead. It's fantastic to be back in that theater, not as a parent this time, but in a different role, it was very nice. Also, a glimpse into my life, I was in line at the city tax office on the day of filing at 7:45, and I was not first in line 20 minutes before they opened the door. It's my tradition to visit them on the deadline, and I was there early, and they were taking filings before the doors were opened. They were coming out, working the line at 7:45, and it's just amazing staff, and people were, so bizarre, happy to be in line to pay their taxes here on the 15th. So thanks to the staff that went above and beyond. Also, I had the privilege to attend the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission Spring Dinner with both the mayor and vice mayor and the city manager this last week, and really that event was, I'm new to the Regional Planning Commission as a delegate, or alternate delegate, but to network with the other municipalities, to share in the things that are happening at a regional level that affects our neighborhoods and our cities, was really just a great evening, and just to spend time with both the mayor and vice mayor that evening. I also attended the Miami Valley Cable Council's training for new elected officials just two weeks ago, and you know, you work to get elected, and you sit up here where these five men have sat for years before us, and I left that training, networked with other freshmen, elected officials, but also the new knowledge of what I don't know. And it dawned on me tonight, as these five arrived to pay their respects and thanks to Shawna, that there's so much for us to learn, and I was reminded just two weeks ago in that training, and then tonight, sitting in front of these men. On that, I can't imagine being in the seat today without the work that Shawna did to onboard the new folks and make us feel welcome and equipped to even sit here. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that our city manager would like to say a few words as well.
Shawna, I'll be brief. I just want to thank you personally for supporting me during a transition to a new home, to a new office, to a new job here in Kettering. Also, probably most importantly, thank you for your exceptional work. You have been the model employee exhibiting excellence every single step of the way, and we thank you.
Okay, and I've been asked by all three of our missing members to extend their best wishes to you. They all, we're sorry they couldn't be here tonight, but they all sent you their best. Okay. All right. With that, if there's no further business to come before city council?
Oh, yes.
There are? Wait a minute, you have to, I skipped someone a little bit, even a little bit more important than you, not many. Shawna, but I think you're going to, all right, come on, there's no holding back.
Well, first of all, I'd like to touch on what Brian said. I was at tax department last week on the 15th, and what is wrong with people that wait till the last day? The place was packed. Nancy Gregory sent me an email and said it was 5:15, it was still packed over in the north building over there, so congratulations to our tax department for the hard work and that, and so.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Both you and Brian said, what's wrong with people who go to file their things at the last minute?
Pull your boat there.
Would you answer it?
No, I wasn't there to file my taxes.
Just me.
I bring a tray of Killer Brownies to them every year, so it wasn't.
I need to come later in the day, they weren't there at 8:00.
I nail mine. Ryan touched on five council people sitting out here, and we were all part of when Shawna was hired, but there's another council person. He said five men, so I thought, okay. So we actually have six out of the seven people, and the seventh one would have been there, except he's riding bikes out in Arizona, Bill Lauder. So Bill sends his congratulations. We had the privilege of working with LaShawna for years, and getting to know her was great. I can remember, excuse me, I can remember the first Halloween when Shawna brought, excuse me, Avery over to the house and dressed up for Halloween, and it's been a great relationship all of us have had with us. Each of us have our stories and that. Just this week, I called Shawna Friday and said, I can't get into something, what's my password? Shawna looked it up on the sheet that she still keeps for passwords for some of my old, old accounts, so Shawna, we would like to thank you for your years of service. You were a shining star. You were one that always had a smile on her face, most of the time. You were one that worked hard, that gave everything, that everybody looked up to and went to when they needed something. You were our unanimous choice when we were interviewing for people to hire for that position. We enjoyed watching you come in, we enjoyed watching you go out, not so much going out from now, so thank you for everything that you did for not only council when we sat on there, but this entire city, city manager's office, and everybody throughout this entire city. You will be missed, you will be hard to replace, and we will always remember you. We, too, have some flowers and a card and gift card that we would like to give to you.
Thank you. Shawna, we will now turn the podium over to you. You can have as long as you want.
I promise I'll be brief. First off, I would like to thank the Kettering community. It's been an honor to serve as your clerk of council for the past nine years. I appreciate your phone calls, your suggestions on how to make the community better. Everything you've given advice on has been taken to heart, and I truly appreciate that. I would like to thank city council, past and present, especially the former city council members who took time out of their evening to be here. I am truly humbled by your guidance and wisdoms over the years on how to be a better public servant and how to better serve the Kettering community. I wouldn't be able to do my job if it wasn't for your guys' leadership, so I do appreciate that. I would like to thank the city of Kettering team and department directors. I love how we champion for each other's successes, and we stand by each other to be better public servants, and we push each other, so I thank you for that support over the years as well. To my office team, I thank you guys for making every day enjoyable, and it feels like a party every time we come into work, and we do great work, and I do appreciate everything that you guys do for me. I would like to thank my mom and dad for instilling a work ethic in me and the importance of giving back to your community, which you love. And I would love to thank my husband, Lenny, and my daughter, Ava, for their patience and understanding of me having to miss a few things to be at city council, so I'm looking forward to be able to spend more time with you guys. So with that, thank you, guys. I'm truly humbled by the support this evening, and that's all. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. And with that, no further persons standing up, okay. Be no further business to come before city council. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be May 14th, 2024, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.